I'd like to call to order the July tenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting of the Novi Public Library Board of Trustees. Ask that we rise if we can and say a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll ask the secretary to do a roll call.
Member Bartlett is absent. Trustee Burke?
Here.
Trustee Crawford?
Here.
Trustee Dooley is absent excused. Trustee Gawalapu is absent excused. Trustee Halvangis is here. Trustee Stirring?
Here.
Student Representative Demore?
Here.
And Dohedwala?
Here.
Next item is approval of the agenda. They have the agenda in front of us. Entertain a motion to approve it.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the agenda? If not, I'll ask the secretary to take the vote.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Trustee Halvangis says yes. Trustee Stirring?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of minutes of June twelfth, two thousand twenty-five, regular board meeting, and the approval of the claims and warrants for accounts two seventy-one and two seventy-two, pages eleven through thirteen on our handle. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's just take the vote.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Trustee Halvangis is yes. Trustee Stirring?
Yes.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Moving, moving on to next item. It's a presentation.
Yes.
For our wonderful student representatives.
Yes, so I'm going to ask Alex and Elena to go on up to the podium there. They're going to be giving a presentation about their year with teen programming and teen events. So thank you both as student representatives. So we're excited to have them this evening.
For the record, I noticed that trustee Bartlett's here.
Yes.
I will reflect that in the record.
I was worried I missed something.
Hello.
It's that shirt. You'll be proud of me.
All right, this is our end of year wrap-up presentation for the season of two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-five. I'm Alex.
And I'm Elena.
Okay, starting off, we have a summary of our tween and teen programs from the different seasons. First up in fall, we have tween STEM Grab and Go Kits along with personalized keychains in September. And then October, we have a grand old list of events. And then November, we have Craftastic Tuesday, Tween Fall and Grab and Go Kit, and then Silly Stone Faces. And some of the monthly programs that occurred throughout September, October, and November was Club Half-Blood, the No Required Reading Book Club, and Novi Chess Club. Next up, we have our winter programs. December, we had our annual Ginger Roadhouse Decorating along with the Tween and Grab, Tween Grab and Go Kit for December, January, and February. And then we have DIY Wireless Snow Globes for our December craft. And then we have Element Jar Necklaces for our January craft along with a sewing machine demo. And then in February, we have Oil Pastel Art along with another sewing machine demo. And to continue, we have the monthly programs, Club Half-Blood, No Required Reading, and Novi Chess Club.
For spring twenty twenty, I think that's supposed to say twenty twenty-five, but spring twenty twenty-five in March, we had the March Grab and Go Kit Distribution, which continued through April and May as well. We had DIY Mason Jars and a sewing machine demo. In April, we had the Teen Reality Check with MSU FCU, sorry. And the, and in May, we had the Watercolor Bookmark Event, and our monthly programs continued with Club Half-Blood, No Required Reading Book Club, and Novi Chess Club. Summer twenty twenty-five tween and teen programs were just for June, were Mad Scientist, June Tween Grab and Go Kit, Treat Yourself Book Exchange, which I really wish I was able to attend, but that sounded really fun. But Hanging Yarn Art, Drummunity, and Retro Shrinky Dinks. And our monthly programs again were Club Half-Blood, No Required Reading Book Club, and Novi Chess Club.
I would like to add, I did go to the Treat Yourself Book Exchange, and I came back with five new books. So I was very happy with that. That was a great event, so I hope we continue to do that. Um, next up, we have our Teen Advisory Board summary. So meetings were held monthly from September of two thousand twenty-four to May of two thousand twenty-five, which is concurrent with our school year. Members participated in many activities such as mental health presentations, street decorating, reading month activities, and an understanding of credit presentation, which was new this year. The community service project this year was making tie blankets for shelter dogs. The, finally, the TAB elections for the upcoming year were held in May, and meetings will resume again in September of two thousand twenty-five concurrent with our school year. Um, finally, here are some photos of the different activities we did. Um, first up, this is our mental health activity with ACMH, which was also new this year. And then December, we did our annual Ginger Roadhouse Decorating activity. This year, we did the kits instead of the Graham Crackers. And then in January, we did our community service project, which involved making blankets for a dog shelter. This is actually one of my favorite meetings because it's a fun, easy craft, and it's a good way to get back.
So here's our, here's a slide on Teen Space. So the space is where students are able to hang out, play games, and study. And Teen Space will resume in August two thousand twenty-five concurrent with the school year. So you can see the monthly stats for Teen Space there. I'm not going to list all of them off, but I will talk about, contextualize all of these. August, obviously, it's a lower number considering it's only one week. And you can see that the numbers are higher towards the beginning of the school year because students, a lot of the time I notice, they use Teen Space to kind of meet new people at the beginning of the year. And the numbers decline towards the end of the school year because in February through May, many people are are traveling for school events, whether it be sport, HOSA, DECA, et cetera. There's a lot of travel during that spring season, as well as AP tests and IB tests. So that's why you see lower numbers during that time. But overall, throughout the year, it has been a great way for people to meet. I myself have gone there quite a few times to play ping pong with my friends, to hang out. So it's been really successful this year, and we hope to see our numbers rise, continue to rise in the coming years. So the Fall Teen Stop displays, oh, sorry. The Fall Teen Stops displays were in September, cool for school books. October were spooky books. November were wicked witches. December was best books of two thousand twenty-four. January was Winter Wonderland, and February was Romancacy.
Finally, we have some of our spring and summer Teen Stop displays featured. In March, books were handpicked by the Novi Public Library Teen Advisory Board. And then in June, we picked some books in honor of Pride Month. Now for our final thoughts after this two-year experience. Um, I wanted to share, so as a student representative, I have enjoyed learning so, so much about the different library programs. I feel like with this, I not only know what programs exist, but also a lot more detailed, you know, idea of what they are, and then I can find more to attend myself. Um, and I also enjoyed gaining an understanding of which programs tend to be more popular, which ones are public-like, stuff like that. Um, and then as for advice for incoming student representatives, I'd recommend reviewing the board packet because, in my opinion, I learned a lot more about the library from like a financial standpoint and how it functions within the community, which is something that you can't really figure out if you're not involved with this. Um, so I enjoyed learning about that. And then I also, you know, try to finish reports as early as possible so that you don't have to stress. But that's my advice for incoming representatives. So I really enjoyed this experience.
Um, so my favorite part of the, of being part of the library board was connecting to the Novi Public Library. When I was like a lot younger, like when I was like five or six, my mom was a stay-at-home mom, so she would take, so she would try to take me and my brother. We were living in Farmington at the time, so we weren't coming to NPL. But she would take me and my brother to all these, um, different events, like we play, sorry. We were like singing songs and like making crafts. So I really appreciate, this was a really good way for me to like appreciate what libraries have done for me in my childhood and kind of connect with the Novi Public Library. And I also learned the practical skill of compiling information, like making a report, which I never really experienced before. And overall, it was a great way to take a more active role in the city, and it's, I hope it sticks with me in the future.
So thank you for listening to this year's wrap-up presentation, and we invite any questions. Yes.
Kathy?
I don't really have any questions. I just want to sincerely thank you both. Actually, your reports have been the most thorough, I think, of any of the reports that we've ever received. And I'm sure that neither one of you will realize how many people you've touched this year just by doing the programming and attending the activities and everything. You'll never know, really, how many people you've touched. So a simple thank you doesn't seem adequate, but I know you both have had so many other things to do. This was probably very time-consuming, time that you could have spent studying or maybe actually having some other kind of fun. But I would like to know from either one of you, if there's anything that you could change about the program this year, what would it be?
Yeah, if there's anything that you could change this year, what would it be?
My thing is like, the library is so amazing and there's so many events, but I think one of the best ways, because especially we've, we've seen a bit of like ups and downs with teen attendance, stuff like that. So I would like to like incorporate our like social media more, like on a platform like Instagram that like a lot of teens use, and just trying to like push as much like advertising for different events as possible so that more teens can know about it. Because I do think that the youth programs are super popular, and I do think we have good teen programs, but I definitely think we could up those numbers if we pushed to their audience on like Instagram and stuff like that. Because I know a lot of teens probably aren't checking out like the website and things like that. So I do think using social media like Instagram would be helpful. So I think that was, that'd be one thing I would change, because like I said, we have a lot of amazing events. It'd be wonderful if we can show them off and, you know, get more attendance.
Any more?
Um, no, I think that's like the main point. I think all the programs themselves are really, really constructive and really, really appealing to the teen population here. It's just about pushing it out, which I think Alex put really well, would be best done on social media, because even in class, you know, everyone's on Insta, so. That's definitely something to consider moving forward.
Well, once again, I don't want to speak for the board, but I know I do speak for the board when I say sincerely, we really appreciate all you've done this year. It's really been, it's really been a blessing to have both of you here. So thanks.
Thank you. I've appreciated being here, so.
Yeah.
Just, just want to say the same thing basically that Kathy said. Elena and Alex have been a joy working with you for the past couple of years. And I mean, you've added so much to our meetings, and I mean, it's made it enjoyable for us and formative for us. And we certainly wish you well, but thank you for being part of our library.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here, so.
Thank you both.
Don't move away yet. So I'm going to have you just move to the side a tiny bit. Perfect. Because these two young ladies, as you know, have given two years to our, our library, and I think that's an amazing commitment. Yes. You know, trustee Crawford, like you mentioned, they could be choosing to do other things. They are very busy individuals. I know that there, some are involved in sports. There's extracurricular activities, different clubs and things that you participate in, both of you, because we know that this is a pretty amazing high school and, and there's a lot of expectations for our students. And you chose to be part of our organization. It wasn't someone picking you. You chose the opportunity to apply and then be part of us. I think that says a lot, you know, for, for these students to take that time. And so we have something for both of them. Because Alex, hold on, let me get back to the mic here, so. Because Alex is leaving us and going to college, we, we made sure that we're sending her off. Yes, we made sure that we're sending her off with some appropriate attire as she is going to the University of Michigan. So we are very proud of you. And this is for you. This is a huge thank you to you for your two years. Yes, absolutely. Then Elena, I have for you.
Thank you so much.
A little gift and also an appreciation for you and your two years. You both have worked very hard. I know you make a mention about the reports, but you did a fantastic job turning in reports. And I know it's hard sometimes to meet deadlines, but you did. And you did a great job communicating not only with me, but I know you worked very closely with Mrs. Frickie for a while until she left. And she would be standing here saying the same thing about the two of you, you know, very driven and very much committed to our organization and to the teens. And so I appreciate you being, you know, spokespeople and, you know, caring on and offering opportunities for our teen population. It's a, it's a different, difficult population actually to reach, and I appreciate the comments about Instagram because we know how busy you are and committed to things that sometimes it's hard to reach you to find out if there's something that we can connect you with, with the library. And that's one of the components of, of this position is to try and have that connection. I am so proud of both of you, and I wish you the very best in school and college, and then your last year and, and where you go. So please make sure you stay in touch and let us know where you end up next year. All right? So thank you both. Let's give them a round. Thank you. Now I'm going to call Dana. Ooh, actually, we have their report first. My, my bad. You have, yes, sorry, Dana, take a moment. Let's make sure that they don't have to stay too late. So we'll have them do their reports first. Thank you.
For June two thousand twenty-five, the tween and teen library programs were Mad Scientist: Color Your World on June eleventh. This event featured colorful chemical reactions, a rainbow maker that uses heat and ice, fun colors with the pH scale, and windbags used by volunteers to make their own rainbow display. Attendance was a hundred and sixteen. The Club Half-Blood program was held on June twelfth. This event was for all fans of Greek mythology, monsters, and mayhem. Those loving Percy Jackson attended our monthly club for book talks, snacks, games, and crafts inspired by the books. Attendance was seven. The June Tween and Grab, Grab and Go Kit was held on June twentieth. Tweens came into the library to get a Grab and Go Kit with STEM and creative supplies. Attendance was ninety-six. The Hanging Yarn Event was held on June twenty-second. Tweens explored the world of art through yarn and designed and decorated a unique hanging wall art piece to take home. This program encouraged creativity and hands-on engagement with fiber arts. Attendance was fourteen. The Drummunity Event was held on June twenty-fifth. Library groups of all ages joined percussionist Laurie Fithin to play the drums. Attendance was eighty-five. IQ Teen Invasion Retro Shrinky Dinks was held on June twenty-sixth. This is part of an ongoing string of events that this summer where teens will be welcome to make crafts in the IQ. This event, participants crafted shrinky dinks. The Novi Chess Club was held on June twenty-sixth. Participants of all levels of chess practiced their skills in a group setting. Attendance was nineteen. Teen Space does not operate in June as the two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-five school year is ended.
Okay, and then as a reminder, the Teen Advisory Board will not meet in the month of June, or did not meet in the month of June. They will open back up with meetings in September. As for upcoming programs, A2 Magic, Art of Magic will be held on August sixth from seven to eight P M. The IQ Teen Invasion, Zines, Blackout Poetry, Learn to Crochet will be held on August seventh in different sessions from two thirty to four. Back to School Bingo will be held on August ninth from two to four P M. Turtle Tales will be held on August tenth, one to three thirty P M in two sessions. The Novi Chess Club will be held on August twenty-first, seven to eight P M. The August Tween Grab and Go Kit will be held on August twenty-second. And the Echo Introduction to Music Camp will be held on August twenty-second, one to three P M. And then finally, again, our Teen Stop Display featured books in honor of Pride Month. Thank you again for this experience. I'd like to put that out there. I have enjoyed being a part of this group, so.
And we've enjoyed you, so, yes, thank you both. Any questions on the report today? This is their last report.
It's been wonderful. We wish you both so well.
Thank you.
I really appreciated knowing all the various things. Every time, I'm amazed at how much activity there is, so.
I know.
Yeah.
I wish I could go.
We have a knitting group on Thursdays that you can stop into from ten to twelve.
I don't know how to crochet.
Well, I think they, there's a few ladies there that could show you that. I'm sure. So if you want to check in with them. But it has been a pleasure, ladies. Thank you so much for your years of, of time and experience, and we really do appreciate you. I hope you will please stop in and let me know how you're doing, okay?
Yes, I definitely will.
Awesome.
I was at the library before this, so.
Good. All right. Well, you know where I'm at. So stop in and say hello. I'd love to hear how things are going. Okay. Wish you the best of your summer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Oh, and you get to take your signs.
Oh, wow.
Yes, those are official, right? There you go.
Thank you.
Awesome. I haven't heard from the city yet as to filling the positions for the future, so I'll keep you posted. So Dana Van Oost.
Presentation from our own Dana.
Yes. Yes. Hello, is this thing on? Can you hear me? I don't know which one's working better. This one maybe? Okay, I'll go over here. Hello, library board. Thank you so much for having me here today. I'm doing, I'm presenting to you two different documents. So first is our, a marketing plan for July two thousand twenty-five to June two thousand twenty-seven, so a two-year plan in addition to our strategic plan. I figure we'll end with the strategic plan because that's like the, woo, you're in review, and we're beginning a new year, so I think it's a good one to end with. Yes, so I can't remember what page in you were. Was it?
Ninety-one.
Ninety-one, okay. All right, just so you've got it in front of you while we go through. So our marketing plan is a bit different from what I've had in the past. In the past, I've kind of inherited older marketing plans that I've kind of tweaked and stuff and then, you know, made some edits and then kind of put it out. But this one's kind of brand spanking new. It was really influenced by our strategic plan and survey that we did and focus groups and everything, and it's really relying heavily on telling NPL's story better, getting stories from the community to have those like impact stories that we can show what NPL does for the community, and just making sure that we're communicating out as much as we can with our, with our, you know, residents about what we do. So just to note, this is kind of a draft because we're still waiting on final fiscal numbers from twenty-four, twenty-five. So I'll update by the numbers section with the new numbers once those come out. But, so I'll kind of go through each section. I won't, you know, go super in-depth, but from the beginning, I wanted to put in some numbers just to kind of show how we've done since the building opened. So items checked out, in-person visits, and programming attendance. You can kind of see over here, which, you know, how these trends have gone over the past fifteen years, right? Yes. Yes, fifteen years. And we also, and I want to say huge thank you to Laurie and Kat Dooley because they're on the Events Fundraising and Marketing Committee. Did I say that right? Um, and they reviewed this document multiple times and gave me a lot of feedback. And, and they mentioned during one of our conversations about adding in COVID because it was a huge, I mean, yeah, it's still, we're still coming out of it, I would say. We're still making sure that we're remaining focused on rebuilding and expanding our community engagement, but we definitely can see the trend here of it kind of dipping a little bit, but we're on the way, you know, uptracking again from there. So just wanted to make a note about that. Um, and then I added in a lot of information about strategic plan, like I said, because it is such a huge thing that we're looking at and making sure that it's kind of a part of our daily being at the library. So just wanting to highlight our four goals that we're, we're looking at, as well as our new mission, our library values. So I've got that in there. Next is our strength, so just talking about our proximity to the high school. We have Lakeshore Landing Library. We have T L N, which is a huge consortium that, you know, our residents can tap into four million items throughout the, the area. So it's a huge benefit. I wanted to mention our rebranding efforts as well because that's been really big for this past year. I'm just making sure that the community recognizes the library when they see our stuff, you know, see our information put out into the community. It's been huge. Um, I think it just enhances that recognition of our programs, our services, everything, so it's something that we're really focusing on as well. Next is accessibility, which for this year will also be a big project for us. And there's just some new guidelines that we do have to follow by October of next year. Um, just making sure that our online, our website, any of our communications that go out to the community are accessible. So adding in alt text to images, links have accessible text, our PDFs, like the board packet. We'll make sure that those are accessible as well on our website and everything. So add in some current data, which is from our strategic plan, which is great that we had that because I could just use that same data. Our target markets I'll be focusing on for the marketing plan, our current patrons who we want, current patrons who we want to convert into advocates. So, you know, those people that will be telling their story and trying to get out to the community and, and, you know, tell them the good news, bring them into the library and say, hey, look at what they have. You should come in and join. I'm focusing on cardholders who are unaware of NPL programs and services, residents without library cards, and businesses, residents, organizations who are interested in donating or sponsorships with the library. So our three goals to focus on are increasing community awareness throughout Novi of NPL services, especially North Novi, increasing library cardholders, and increasing fundraising and sponsorship activity. Um, so just to note, we are planning for our sixty-fifth anniversary to raise sixty-five thousand dollars. And we are actually, over halfway there, we've got thirty-four thousand already donated to the library through sponsors and a generous donor. So we wanted to have a little like temperature gauge, which we did as books. So you can see we're, we're rising to the top there. Marketing strategy, I won't go into super detail because there's a lot of different things that will go for each goal. But like I said, we're making sure that we're, uh, making a, we want to make a campaign that brings library patrons into us and, you know, will, they'll go out into the community and kind of be our advocates for us. You know, we can do that, but I think it's really important when it's a patron to a patron, a resident to a resident, telling their story of why the library's great, and then why they should join. So we want to do a campaign, a library champion campaign for that. Uh, let's see, collecting feedback from library users. So we want to do like a patron story request form, getting those stories, like I said, so we can share them out to the community. Increasing our, our targeted email so we can get that information directly to our cardholders in the best way possible. And just some other details as well. Um, next for increasing cardholders, we want to capitalize on library-related celebrations and offer incentives for signing up. So we have a lot of great, you know, holidays that go through the year, so we want to make sure we're capitalizing on those. And, you know, if you come in for Library Card Sign Up Month and you get a new card, you maybe get a bag or something, you know, something to kind of entice and incentivize signing up for a card. We want to implement some new art, cardholder outreach campaigns in areas of low percentages of cardholders, so trying to figure out what that means if we're doing a library card sign-up event, going to city events, and just being there and being present for people to sign up for cards when they're there, that kind of thing. And then connecting with HOAs as, as well. And we have a lot that come in through the library with our meeting rooms. Um, and so we're, you know, going to be working hard on trying to get to those HOAs and, and get information to them to give to their residents about the library. So if there's new residents who are moving in, they'll get, you know, some information about the library and how they can sign up for a card. And then finally, increasing fundraising and sponsorship activity, looking for ways to connect with our residents and local businesses and organizations who want to support the library, and then promoting the benefits of donating through the Friends as well. Because there are four, four oh one three C, is that, four, five oh one C three, sorry. Yes, so fundraising. And here's our sixty-fifth anniversary little logo here. I think I can make it bigger so you can see it better. Hey, there we go. And then for timeline, I just wanted to kind of visualize all of this stuff because it's a lot of different projects and things that we want to get done. So I just wanted to make a timeline so I could kind of see at, at certain points of the year, you know, what would be focusing on. Nice timeline. And then evaluation assessment, I'm doing this through our annual report because we get a lot of good numbers through that. We have our, I mean, the number of cardholders, our usage stats of the building, program participants. That's a huge tell of, of how we're doing, is, is if those numbers are increasing. And obviously, we want to check social media engagement. We have comment boxes in the library to get opinions and feedback. We want to do a patron usage survey as well. Um, and there's just a lot of ways we want to get that, you know, evaluation from the community and make sure that we're, you know, we're listening to their needs and we're doing what they would like us to do. So. Yeah, so that is our marketing plan for the next two years. Um, like I said, it's going to be heavily focused on telling NPL's story, but also having patrons tell us their stories of them using the library and what benefits it has to them, so then we can share those stories back out and, and hopefully, you know, get more cardholders and, and more people to sign up for their library cards. Any questions about the marketing plan? Yes.
Uh, just one, the, the fundraising goal, it mentions the Friends. Does it include the Friends in, is the sixty-five thousand? Or is that sixty-five thousand in addition to what the Friends bring in?
It's additional to what the Friends bring in. Yep.
We've already collected, what, thirty-four, thirty-five thousand?
Yep, thirty-four.
We had to donate.
Yes.
When you talk about bringing in new, increasing the library cardholders.
Yes.
Do you have a database or something that you can cross-reference, like who already has a card versus households where they don't? versus households where they don't, is that something that?
Yeah, it's with the GIS data. Yeah, with the GIS data from the, from the, from the city of Novi. We sent them kind of all of our information, you know, obviously no patron records or anything like that, but they could mark on a map all the different, where all the different library cards are. So we can see specifically where there's less cards. Yeah, in comparison, yeah.
Very good.
So you can be very targeted.
We can.
Yeah, that's great. And I love that idea of getting stories, by the way. I think that's so effective and
Huge.
Because, I mean, I've been impacted just hearing all the stuff that happens in the library, so I can't imagine that won't have a big impact
Oh, yeah.
on the community members as well to hear what a big impact the library has. So, well done.
Great, thank you. All right.
I do just want to make a comment.
Yes.
I, I know from, not from experience, from the meetings that you've put a lot of work into this and, you know, I'm sure I speak for everybody that we really appreciate it. And it's a great plan, now we just have to implement it.
Yes, yes. Got a good team. Okay, so for our marketing plan, we'll head over to the strategic plan year in review. Which I think I can make, well done. I thought I could make it bigger. Oh, there we go. Okay. All right, so our strategic plan year in review, so everything that was accomplished last year in relation to our strategic plan, so I like to say this because I've told a couple people, but when I first put the strategic plan together, this document, it was eight and a half by 11, two-sided. And I gave it to Julie and there was ink all over it. With a lot more stuff to add. It was all good, yeah. So I just was like, okay, this is going to have to be like a four-page document just because there was so much that was done in this past year. Yeah, so what you have in front of you is our final plan. So I want to say thank you to Lori and Kat again for reviewing this document, but also Kathy and Brian for kind of doing the, the last look over and providing some excellent feedback, which culminated with this, the front page here. So thank you Kathy for your eye. So at the front, we just wanted to highlight our four goals again, which we'll see again on the inside, and then just some photos just to show off the different things that happened over the year, like new branding, staff appreciation, our single-user booth, teen area updates, charging stations and staff parking. All right, so our next section up here on page two is informed by feedback from the community and staff. When I was putting this together, I was like, we really need, I think, to have some quotes from our, our, our survey that we had. Because when I was looking through it, so many comments were about, you know, teens in the library and what can you do about teens in the library. There was a lot of staff comments about the culture of the library. And then lastly, for the third comment, just about the digital library. So I wanted to make sure that I brought in some quotes and then showed the solutions, you know, to that feedback that we got through our survey. So that's what you see there, with teen area, staff feedback and then our digital library materials there. So for the next section is our first goal, which is aligned funding and services. So we wanted to list out the goal that we had and then the solutions that we did for this year. So making sure that we had conversations about funding needs with civic leaders and then as well, the library board revised their financial plan. So we added that in there to mark for, for that. The next is improved internal communication. So two of the goals were staff-related, two were more public and outward-facing. So this is our first internal one, to improve our processes and our communications within the building. And our solutions, we had a lot. We improved transparency by making sure that a lot of our information was, you know, shared out with the staff when decisions were being made. Julie always holds, you know, monthly meetings with staff so they can get feedback. She can share what's going on with the library board. We get feedback now, I mean, we did before, but it's a lot, you know, more open to where we have anonymous comment card system. Staff feel more welcome to bring their comments to the tables and then be involved in committees as well to share those thoughts. And then lastly, organizational tools. We have a lot of tools now in our belt to help with communication, you know, between departments. You know, a marketing request form, so if anybody needs any marketing, you know, related needs, they can contact me easily. We have Google Chat, which is super fast and easy for us to communicate back and forth. So a lot of work on our internal communications at the library in the past year. Next is the biggie. This is adapting resources, services and facilities. You'll see everything that was accomplished this year. So a lot of teen-related or second floor teen room was completed. We actually just got the signage installed yesterday morning. It looks wonderful, so come check it out. A lot of technology updates, oh my goodness, firewall updates, approved the RFP for the new automated return system, public printing and copying got updates, iQ got a whole bunch of new equipment, device charging stations were funded by the Friends. So just so many different, you know, technology updates and huge shout out to Jeff and his team for, for getting all this done this year. It was a lot. Collections were big, so with that feedback from digital library and kind of the long waits and with, with our digital resources and things, that the budget was increased. And then we just, you know, made some edits to Hoopla and Tutor as well, you know, based on usage needs and, and just making sure that we had equitable access to all meeting rooms to highlight that. So the public can now check on our meeting room availability and submit requests online. So it's a huge, you know, benefit with our customer service and making sure that that service is available 24/7 basically now. Building enhancements or single-user space, there's a lot of comments about like, oh, we want more like study space, you know, areas for one person to, to study at. So the single-user space was installed and, and supported by the Friends. Some lighting in the, the parking lot and there was some investigative work with the heating, you know, system in our lobby as well. Yes. Programming, implemented some streamlined processes for our grab-and-go kits because we got some feedback about that, so that's running a lot better. Of course, we continued our partnerships with a lot of different organizations to provide programs in the organization. We had our first open house, which I know a few of you were at and it was, yeah, super popular and we're doing it again in September. And we hosted our first human library event to foster community dialogue and engagement. Accessibility, we approved the accessibility, our accommodations and accessibility policy in October. We have a collections map to highlight, you know, where our different collections are at the library for easy use. Recite Me toolbar was huge and they offered some updates as well for our users on our website. And then marketing, just with rebranding and social media, you know, like I talked about earlier, making sure all of our, our communications are on-brand so the community can recognize who we are when we put things out. And then our last goal is staff investment and retention. Some of our solutions for the past year was a new onboarding system was implemented. So it's easier tracking, you know, better checklist, so all of the departments work together to get onboarding done. The HR policy, the whole new manual was approved, which included remote work guidelines, sick time for part-time staff and increased retirement contribution from six to nine percent. And then, let's see, performance evaluation, we updated those as well this year. So we're, come back, come back to me, updated that as well this year and used that for the first time. And then increasing staff recognition to boost our, you know, staff culture at the library by recognizing anniversaries and birthdays in a number of ways, getting new logo wear and then getting our employee of the month in parking spaces at the front of the library as well, making sure that our staff have a place to park when they come to the library. And then lastly, we wanted to highlight our partners, a huge ones, the Friends of the Novi Library just because they give us, you know, so, so generous in, in funding so many programs and technology and, and resources for the libraries. So we wanted to give a huge shout out to them and what they did this past year. And then the Historical Commission as well because they also do programming and technology and services that benefit our community. So we wanted to give them a shout out as well. Yeah, and then just a way to stay up to date, some information down there, so.
Do you all feel tired? Because you all had a hand in this as well. But I'd like to give first a big shout out to Dana. Thank you for, you know, compiling this and, and bringing out major points that needed to be recognized. But really, I'd like to take a moment to thank the staff. You know, everyone in our building had their hand somewhere in something that was listed. And that was one of the things that Dana and I also wanted to make sure is that we recognize something where we could say that someone was somehow contributing, which we truly appreciate. So really, I, I do want to thank the staff. They have worked very hard and again, we did have, you know, some staff absences at some times. We're close to being full-staffed again, but you know, when that happens, that does change the trajectory a little bit, you know, with getting things done and, and keeping the ship. And they certainly helped keep that ship going very well. So I'm very proud of them and, but you did a wonderful job putting this together because I think it tells a great story for our, our one year of accomplishing the strategic plan. Do you want to talk a little bit about Rethinking Libraries?
Oh, yes, we did meet with Rethinking Libraries for a follow-up and they absolutely loved the strategic plan year in review, loved how it was kind of set up and, and they are offering to come back and actually do some sessions with staff and just get their thoughts about, about that first year. You know, what worked, what didn't, what could be better. So we're looking to schedule those for mid-July, end of, or beginning of August. So, yeah, looking forward to having them back and, yeah, getting staff feedback directly.
Nice. Any thoughts, questions for Dana?
Excellent job, as always.
Very good.
Really, really good.
Yes, and this will be shared out with the community for sure.
Yes.
The big, yeah, we'll make sure it's on the website, social media, everywhere, e-news. Yeah, so they get this information directly.
We'll also make sure that council, as we, you know, gear up for some of the information that we want to present to them and, and talk with them about with the library, we'll make sure that this information is also available for them as well.
That's great.
Well, can I just ask, is the, you said you're going to share it with council?
Yes.
I mean, are you just going to put it in the packets or is it going to be a presentation?
I'd like us to do a presentation, so I'll be looking to see if we can, yeah, if we can set that up with them. Yes.
Yes, good point.
Yes.
All right, thank you so much for having me. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks Dana.
This is the time in our agenda, we invite public comment. In order here, all citizens, comments at a reasonable hour. The library board requests that speakers respect the three-minute time limit. This is not a question and answer session, however, is an opportunity to voice your thoughts with the library board. Citizens must state their first, last name and address. Anybody from the public wish to address the board? Seeing no one, moving on, on our agenda. We've already had the students' representative report. So for the president's report, first of all, I wanted to thank staff. I think I raised the issue last month about being able to use library cards and I think somebody contacted Traverse and apparently they have a different software system that makes the use of the driver's license, but we don't, we have a different software system and it doesn't work.
Correct.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Secondly, there is in our handout, page 25 is, and we won't vote on it now, but there is a list of the monthly meetings for next year that we have to approve. Basically, that's the second Thursday of each month, with the exception in April, I think we're meeting on the third Thursday.
If you don't mind, I put that in as a, as a request based on something that's come up with me personally that I know of.
And then the fourth Thursday in March.
Correct.
So you can study that now, so you're, you got any, any upcoming plans, you know, think about it till we get to it in the board action.
And I always try to put these forward to you early because we like to have these dates included in the city's calendar. They start to put that calendar together always in August. So just wanting to make you aware that it's a timeline through the city and, and the Communications Department that I try to meet so that they're not waiting on us.
The next item I'd like to draw your attention to, and I apologize for my voice, I'm a little, seems like it's raw tonight. The strategic plan put out by the Michigan Library Association, which I don't think I've ever seen one of these before. I think this is probably timely in terms of coming up with a plan, given that there may be some cuts in funding at the federal level. So I think it's good that they have engaged a plan to help them move forward. I just was going to go over basically their strategic directions. One, they're an advocate for libraries. Two, they want to elevate library staff professional growth opportunities. Three, they want to optimize communications. And fourth, organizational excellence. I mean, we look to the Michigan Library Association for a lot of help.
We do.
And, and so we wish them very much success in doing this. The one thing I know, and I guess I just didn't know this before, they don't have a permanent executive director?
Not right now. They're, they're in, they're, they have an interim currently and they're looking to fill the position.
But usually they have.
Yes, they always do.
It's just the, I can say right now.
She retired. We just had a recent retirement.
Okay.
Yes. In fact, I have to tell you, the executive director that was there, her name is Debbie Micula and she was absolutely the best in my career, the best person that we've had sitting in that seat for the Michigan Library Association. She did so much advocacy work and really got to know our libraries and what we needed from an organizational standpoint. So many new programs. I put this in here because I wanted you to see, they're supporting us and this is how they support us. And I, I absolutely love, you know, how they've put their strategic plan together. I think there's a lot that says to communication, which so does ours. And you can, you can see some similarities, but they, I do go to them for a lot of feedback, sometimes policy work, sometimes advocacy work. So I do very much appreciate this organization. All our librarians are through them and we have certification and also they are members and we make sure we take care of that for all of our librarians to be part of that. So we do support them from that perspective, but we've had a lot of support from that executive director. The interim, I'm, I'm happy to tell you, I don't know, you know, they go through a, they will go through a formal process, but the person that's currently in the interim position, I've actually had an opportunity to work with in the past. I, I hope that, you know, we see that person actually in that seat. He has worked very closely with Debbie and, and sees the, the very awesome strengths that MLA, MLA has. And so it, we would be in a very good place if we saw that leadership. So I'll, you know, keep you posted as we hear more.
Other than the funding that they get from the federal government, it's primarily funded by the state. I mean, libraries don't pay anything?
No, we do. We pay a membership to be part. That's actually how they're funding it, they get a little bit, but really it is from membership that they are.
How much do the libraries pay?
It depends on the class. So it's, it's broken down by class just because of, you know, the differences. And there are six classes of libraries that can be, that can be part of it.
A large source of it.
It is, yeah. And you have close to 400 libraries. Not all are MLA members, but I think they're striving to have most of those libraries participate if, if at all possible. And this is different from the Library of Michigan. So make sure, I want to make sure, you know, this is an organization, a nonprofit, that's helping us. They're similar to ALA, but from a Michigan standpoint, our state, where the Library of Michigan has an executive director and that is for public, you know, that's for libraries across our state. Yes, so there is a difference. That's more state-funded.
That's more state-funded.
Mark, yeah, the Library of, the Library of Michigan. So we have two institutions actually that we can, we can work with.
So Julie, have they done a strategic plan prior to this that you've been a part of?
I do believe they have, but what I love is that I, I think this is really telling over the last four or five years since COVID, how libraries have changed and how they're really trying to help us as, as individual libraries and support us when they can.
So will we have an opportunity to be a part of the focus groups?
There's an opportunity, they'll reach out sometimes for people literally from the library community to ta, to take part, absolutely. And they look for volunteerism. They look for library board members who might want to serve at a, you know, larger capacity through the library of, through the Michigan Library Association. Yeah. We have, we have a mem, we have a number of staff that actually are part of smaller cohorts and focus groups and, and different committees on MLA that participate as well.
So for a group like this or with an organization like this, could they have done what we did? Get an outside company to come in and do it? They could have done that as well. But they're doing it in-house, correct?
They did it in-house, yeah. I think in the past, they have used consultants in the past. They probably maybe felt they didn't need it at this point, but yeah.
Didn't it look like they used the Alliance for library impact?
Oh, yeah, it was prepared by the Alliance for library impact, yes. So they did, they did use a group.
Okay.
So this wasn't done on their own. But they have done it in the past, they have done on their own. We have too. I think when you need outside feedback and you've used your resources enough, that it's good to get that outside perspective. And that's where we were. If, if you asked me, I, I really appreciated the fact that we put the time in. I don't think we have to do that all the time, but we did this time to kind of find out where we're going, you know, the next few years with the library.
I have no other comments. I have no other comments. My report, if any other trustees have any comments they'd like to make about events they maybe attend or plan on attending or coming up that we want to share with us, good opportunity to do that. I was out of town, so I didn't get to go to the Song Fest that the friends started.
Yes, they're underway.
Yeah, Bill and I were there. It was fun. Really hot, but it was fun.
But they had close to 200 for their first one.
I just do want to make one comment. I was at the library la, last week for one of the meetings and when I was walking out, there was a parent with two little kids and they must have had like two huge stacks of books, so. I think the summer reading program is underway.
Yes.
And.
And for NOVI residents, you have a 100 book limit for checkout.
Oh, my gosh.
And there are parents that take advantage of that. I mean, you think about sitting down and reading a few books a night, you know, picture books, and you can go through those pretty quickly.
It's a.
That's cool.
It's a, I'm going to throw in a little personal story here. It's a good resource. Could I read a lot to my granddaughter and it seems like the same old book? And I said, well, you need to come to the, you know, well, I'll have to bring you to the library. Oh, can I buy books there? And I went and I said, no, you borrow them, but you have to give them back. Oh.
Well, that means she loves them that much. She likes to have them, so.
I said, well, go.
You could be trying them out, you know?
That's right, yes.
You look for the ones that you might buy because you invest in the story, so.
No, she can borrow them, just fine.
Yes.
Any comments from any trustees? If not, next item on the agenda is the treasurer's report. Brian?
Okay, we, nothing much has changed since what we approved last week. In fact, we haven't, we've gotten, I don't, even though the notes are drawn, I don't think we've got different numbers to speak of for, for revenues, so it looks like those are, are either fairly standard or see them within the next few, few weeks. We are in the process of restructuring the 272 accounts and 271 accounts to better reflect the, the operating costs versus what we're, what we're, or the maintenance costs of the building. Also to reflect the proposal that we've got that says that we move $200,000 from our operating budget into our capital budget on an annual basis. That number is not yet put into these, these numbers at this point. One of the things that came up with the, that occurred to us in the meetings with the finance committee and also the strategic plan, is there was one part of the strategic plan that's not noted in the presentation. And yet, if you've got a full copy of the strategic plan, it's in there, and that's the funding. NOVI libraries, and this funding is very simple. We don't put it on any fancy graphs that say, this is how you stand versus other communities as far as their assessment goes. They simply, the Strategic Libraries Group simply took the funding for the libraries divided by the population. So you simply get a, this is how much our population pays per head for the NOVI library. And we came in at $56. The average for a library our size in the Detroit metro area is $76. Yet we are, and also in that plan, in that plan, they highlighted that we are near the top quartile as far as services go to our residents, even though we are in, in that quartile as far as funding. So I, I guess I encourage any of those that, especially those folks that came afterwards, get a copy of the strategic plan. That is near the end of it. There's a lot of that. But it does, it is a couple pages that you can look up, a number of libraries in the area and see what some of our competitive libraries, like for example, I seem to remember Southfield, I think is like $80. I have. Again, per person that lives in, in the residency, so it doesn't deal with. It doesn't deal with, it doesn't deal with, you know, this is what your millage rates are. None of that stuff. It's just here's a number of people and the dollars for the library. But that's. But I, we did, we did, because it's been, it's been a while since we did the plan. We have new members and it's, you know, one of the things that we discussed that probably has fallen through the cracks. And that's all I have.
I will be queuing up the finance committee because I did reserve, I did receive the reserve study. So we'll need to, yep, we'll need to look at that and then present to the full board. I also had a meeting with the finance department today to share the changes that we've talked about in terms of the 272 and 271 accounts. So you'll be hearing from me.
So I know that these are not audited results yet for the end of the year.
Yes, correct.
But as I read them, we had a surplus of $3,600 last year in the 271 account. And we, we spent $9,296 out of the 272 account.
I'm still signing invoices that are still for '24, '25. I just want you to be aware of that.
Okay. No, these aren't de-audited, but.
No, they are not.
It's what's been processed as the end of June.
Right. And this report would have been pulled and usually it, it, for each month, it's typically finalized on the 10th. And this was, this was pulled early because of the holiday. So there's still a lot of information, you know, for that, for that ending. I believe we will have fairly good numbers for you for August to look at, you know, to, and also probably ready to make that first quarter amendment at the August meeting as well, based on my meeting today with the finance department at the city. So because there, there are some changes with personnel to the good that we can show already for '25, '26 coming up, as well as the changes that we want to make with the 272, 271 accounts and making some changes with that as well. So I, it is my plan to bring it August 14th.
Should they close the books on the 10th day after the month?
Yeah, yeah.
That's one thing that some, kind of our meetings on the second Thursday make that tough to get those numbers in.
Yeah, it does.
Because they're probably more like June 20 or.
Yeah, because there's like, there's a, there's a whole week there, you know, because I'm, I'm usually doing that board packet, you know, the week before. So we're pulling them right at the, right at the beginning of the month, you know, like Jul, you know, the first or second of the month. And really, they have until the 10th for each, each time, so. Which, I mean, it picks up the next month. I mean, you end up getting it, but.
And I noticed that they've included the investments. They've updated the investments. The interest in the return on investments.
Yes.
From the last month.
Right, yeah. So, yeah, so I, I feel pretty confident that by the August meeting, we'll, most of everything in terms of invoices. Because I, another thing I'd like to shout out is the staff's been wonderful. You know, I have a number of people who do ordering and work with invoices and then they come to me for final approval. They've, I've sent a number of emails out and said, hey, you know, if you haven't heard from a vendor that we know we're, we're expecting an invoice, please connect with them so that we can get them in quickly. This year, Bindy has been fantastic about getting things over to the city. They do have though, I, I mean, they have a, you know, we're only a very small piece of the pie when it comes to invoices that have to then be approved, that they get put into the system. So there's a lot going on always at the end of the year. But I, I will feel very confident for August that we'll have good numbers for the most part. Thank you.
And moving on, unless somebody else, else has questions, we're pleasure. Not, moving on to the director's report.
Okay, we are on page 46. We have a number of August anniversaries. It must be a month that we do lots of hiring. We usually July, not so much because you start the new fiscal. But Mary-Anzir Mullen, who is now our assistant director of building operations, which I put administration, she's celebrating 15 years in August. Elizabeth Kopko from support services, she's one of our supervisors and she also will be celebrating 15 years. Kirsten Malzahn is one of our information services librarians, celebrating eight years. Danielle Major is information services librarian, celebrating five years. I can't believe five years. We hired her during COVID, so doing a Zoom interview, I can remember that. Andrew Van Bovin, support services, he is one of our shelders and he's celebrating four years. Austin Weberly, information services, one of our librarians, and he is celebrating four years. As, Austin is actually an example of someone who came from support services and, you know, worked in our circulation department, went to school and then went to library school and then became a librarian. So I love telling those stories. Denise Woods from our information technology department is celebrating two years. And Lori Lowry from administration, our new assistant director of public service that we hired a year ago. I can't believe the year went by that fast and she will be celebrating a year. So very excited for all of them and I wish them very, very much a wonderful anniversary. Page 47, just making you aware of information we put out to the community that, you know, we, the city hosts the Festival of Chariots, which is a wonderful, you know, opportunity to celebrate the Indian culture in our community. The library, it's not a library program, but they are at First Park that day. The library does get very much impacted by that program. We like to stay open because we have a number of people that use the library and they might not be going to the event. But we did have to put out some notice, just hoping that people will park in the designated areas that the festival has chosen and not the library, so that we don't have some conflicts with the users of the library that day. I'm actually going to have signage at the entrance saying library parking only. I know that does not stop everyone and it is a public parking lot, so we really can't make people not park there. But I'm hoping that by communicating in advance that we will, we will get people to park where they should be parking. I do know that they're using the school district and all of the parking to the south on Taft and all of the event parking that is to the south of the high school building. You can also use the city parking lots and, and the schools lot on Taft Road as well. I'm just hoping that people will kind of give our, our library patrons the use of our library parking lot. Did you have a question, right? No? Okay. So I wanted to make you aware of that. And there's the information mark that you were looking for on the library card. I'm going to address page 47 for a closure for the library on December 19th. We can talk about that during Matters for Board Action. Page 48 and 49 gives you some information so that we are clearly, you know, giving information to our NOVI patrons and our Northville patrons who visit us when it comes to the change with their catalog system and them leaving the consortium.
Julie, what kind of questions are we, are we getting, some concerns from people regarding this Northville situation?
It's not from our patrons. It's from the Northville patrons. So we want to make sure that we're providing them some information and, and that we've got some talking points available for them, actually.
Have there been a lot of questions about it?
Not from our NOVI patrons, yeah. It's really coming from Northville.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
That's what I was going to ask, that same thing. So have you had a lot of inquiries even from the Northville folks?
From Northville, we do, yes. And so that's why we geared up for information in the lobby. Northville has actually sent over some information to give out from them. You know, our website, we've put a lot of information, just because we don't want there to be confusion and it's definitely different from what we're doing. So just trying to, if we can, provide as, as best the talking points that they need. But really, the, the, the thing to do is to reach out to Northville and go, if you are a Northville resident, definitely to work with Northville Library in order to get that information as best as possible. Let's see, moving forward, I wanted to point out page 51, that is the new signage for the teen lounge. If you get a chance, please come by and see it.
I love it. That's really cute.
Yes, very colorful, very much speaks to, you know, what that space is for. And we're very excited about our, our teens having some more, some more places for them to go in our building. They are definitely big users of the library. Page 52, just wanted to bring you up to speed on, we, we do allow food. We have to. I mean, we have a cafe. There's, there's no way around it. And we, a few years ago, even lifted where people can eat. Because the truth was, if you're going to have a cafe, you really can't keep people in certain parts of the library either. We have certain rooms that we have designated, no food at all, but for the most part, eat, you know, our cafe serves closed containers, you know, drinks are covered, things like that, so that we can keep the spillage and, and messes to a minimum. But no matter what, from COVID, what we inherited, and so has everybody else, is, is the need and use of delivery of food. And even with a cafe, people are going to do that and the cafe is not open, you know, past five o'clock through the week just because of costs. And they're not open on the weekends and we know we have a lot of people that, you know, use the library on the weekends and might be at the library for a number of hours and want to get a food source. And we're okay with that. But what we needed to do is, we needed to put some parameters out there because unfortunately, what was happening is they were coming in and they were expecting us to be then the caregivers of food. And that's not our job. So we're, we're trying to, we've got a sign outside the library right now, so if they're driving up, they're not expecting to leave it with someone and us take responsibility for it. We can't. So we're training our, our users and our delivery drivers to know that you've got to stay in contact with those who are making those connections. So just wanted to give you a heads up if that was coming up or if there was concerns. It's just that I don't want our staff to take responsibility for this food. We don't want it left either, so.
Yeah, we ran it up the schools, same thing.
Yes, trying to find a balance there. And I think the staff has done a really good job of, you know, putting the message out there. We've talked about Summer Song Fest and Tuesday Tunes, they are underway and doing very well. A huge shout out to Gail Anderson because she is, you know, the, the wonderful source behind all these great musical opportunities for people to enjoy. And I know that they're already receiving wonderful review. And then I have the, the different department reports. If there's any questions, I'm happy to entertain anything from those. Please let me know, yes.
With the tech comm committee?
Yes.
So I, I just thought that sounded really fantastic. Is that something that happens regularly? That you get together with people from the other libraries and stuff?
Yes, and we actually hosted it. So it's usually held at different libraries. It's through the library network. That's the, you know, through our consortium, they have that committee. And Jeff was able to host with his staff and bring people to our library and, and show off the things that we're doing. So it was great.
Yeah, that's always good, sharing, sharing ideas.
Yes.
Julie, I have a question.
Yeah, go for it.
Is it, I guess, I, in looking at the iCube, and I love the iCube space, I mean, I really like that as an offering. Do, are these numbers all duplicate? For example, in June, there were 83 creative kits taken out. So are these duplicate, is this like five people who are taking the same kits, kits out all the time? Would it be helpful to us, you know, as a board, even to know how many individuals are coming in the iCube or would it?
I wouldn't know how to do that. We wouldn't know how to track it that way because, I mean, I have staff in there, but not all the time. Appointments definitely because we take them and we sign up with them, but visits, we've, we go by someone using it and then leaving it, you know, for us to re-shelve so that we can fill the kits. I don't think it's, I mean, there might be a, a kid here and there coming, you know, but if they're using a different kit, that's a different use. So truly, it is a new number. I think just, if they were to use the same kit every week. They're still coming into the library, they're still interacting.
You know, coming from, in the background, in places I worked before, they always didn't like duplicate numbers. I mean, that was always the thing. We want to know how many people are actually coming to the facility. And like Parks and Rec 2, they don't want duplicated numbers. So I was just wondering, just a way to judge how much we're spending on how many people.
Right.
I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
So with appointments, yes, you know, we can, we can definitely, but it really hard, it really is hard just for, I, I would consider that usage. The good number is, we have a good way of counting, you know, people coming into the building and that's not duplicated. We can tell you that number. And so that, really, that person's coming in, but we're not duping that number. That's someone using the building. This is someone using.
But it could still be the same person coming two or three times a week, right?
It, it could, but they've visited the library again.
Yeah, yeah.
No matter what, it's another visit.
Yeah.
So I, I don't think there's any difference between someone coming five times and someone coming one time. That's, to me, six uses.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine, I would, I'm fine with it. I'm just wondering if there'd be any value to knowing.
I don't know how we'd, yeah, I really don't know how we do it.
The stuff like the hoopla and things like that, that tells you individual users versus how many usages, right?
Right, right.
So there's some, some points where you do that thing.
Yeah.
Another thing, another thing that I noticed is that the South Lion. Another thing, another thing that I noticed is that the South Lion, um, one of the South Lion libraries actually has, um, they are loaning out from their library. I don't know, maybe you saw it. I think they're loaning out things for parties, games and things like that for people to take out.
They have a library of things. Yes.
What do they have?
It's called a library of things.
Things, huh?
Yes. So they have, they have determined different things that maybe people might want to borrow from the library in order to, like a cake pan, if you were making a cake, right?
Yeah.
Something like that, and maybe it's a unique, it's a shark cake pan.
Wow. Seems like you'd have to have a lot of storage for that, but.
Well, and that's, that's why we haven't done it.
Yeah.
We actually are at capacity with storage in the building. We wouldn't have a way to put those types of things together. And the other thing is, I, you can go to South Lion's library. So as a consortium, why not have that library have that unique collection? And ours, we're really known for our international, right? We're also known for our Makerspace. I think we have our own special collections. In fact, one of our librarians today just announced that she has, um, been able to get more Braille materials, you know, that we are, we are and have a very beautiful Braille collection, and we're known for that. I mean, I think we have different niches that other libraries don't, and so being part of the consortium allows you that opportunity to be going to different libraries and, and getting those for no cost, because we're in that consortium.
Yeah, it was just, I thought that was really unique. I had not heard of any libraries doing that.
Yep. So for us, we do have STEAM kits that you can check out. We have activity bags, the Be Active Bags. So we have some different things that are different from that, but not a library of things.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Nope, it's a great question. We have a magnifying collection. Did you know you can check out, you know, the magnifiers from the building for people who are wanting to look for something? They're needing something new because of some visual needs. They might try something out from the library before actually purchasing something, and we have that collection as well.
Is there a resource where all of these things are compiled? Where I would be able to go to see that South Lion has a?
I don't know if there is, but I can double check.
I just think that would be.
The, the best way to do that would be if the consortium were to highlight that for everyone.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, I'm not looking for you to do more, Julie.
Yes.
I just mean, is there, yeah, like for the consortium to do, you know?
Yeah. And, and I will check on that.
Yeah, just cause I, it's so cool. It's such great ideas, like, yeah.
Right.
I would have no idea they even had that. Is there a way to publicize that?
I also don't know. Sometimes when they do special collections, they only allow it for their NOBI. They only allow it for their home users.
Yeah, sure.
Um, you know, some of our databases that we purchase for NOBI residents are only for NOBI residents and others can't use it. So we'd have to find that out as well.
Right, right.
So it depends. You know, just like our kiosk, it's only for our NOBI residents because they gave us the money in order to put that in. We don't allow the surrounding libraries to, to use it, but, yeah. Nope, but I'll double check for you. Any other questions? I'm happy to entertain.
Um, just a comment in regards to self-checkouts. Um, I noticed that the self-checkouts are roughly, you know, low forties, uh, percent.
Yep.
Anyway, they seem to be somewhat consistent in that regards. And a sense it strikes me as kind of low, though. I'm curious where we are with other libraries in terms of, uh, the using the self-checkouts. And I mean, I, I would, I don't know if there's things that we can do
I can find out.
to try to, have, direct the patrons to use the self-checkouts more. I, I think that's, um, being underutilized.
Okay, I can, I'll, um, I'll first get some data on other libraries and what their percentages are for usage.
Uh-huh.
Um, and what I'll do is, I will try to stay close to Class Six, just because that's comparable.
Fair comparison, yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Maybe it's just me, but I, I would kind of think those numbers would be sixty-five to seventy percent.
Yep, I will say. I can tell you that some people just like the fact that they're going to, to talk to someone. Yes. And/or they might have more than just a checkout. They might have to do something, check their account, something like that. That would make them go and actually speak to someone before just going up to a self-check. And I know people who refuse to use self-checks. They like the fact that they have just the human interaction. But, so I think there's different variables that come into that, but I will definitely look into it for you.
Okay.
Yep.
Or if there's something we could do to encourage.
Sure, absolutely.
I think it might be intimidating, and it's so easy.
Sometimes with people, tech, just technology in general, they, they don't want to, you know, touch. But I can tell you that the Support Services staff, they do a really good job of encouraging and also, uh, teaching, you know, for the first time, especially people who are coming in for holes. You know, that's, it's a great way to, to teach, so they've, they do a lot of that as well. But I can definitely check into that for you, Mark. Thank you. Yep.
Any other questions for our record?
Thank you.
This is the time on our agenda that we allow for a secondary public comment. I see nobody in the audience, so I don't need to repeat the instructions. Opening it up with committee reports, if anybody wants to, a chair or a committee member wants to report something that the committee has done that is not being covered in Board Action.
As the DEI committee, we, as you may have noticed, that Julie has got books for you. We, we have read Serving Patrons with Disabilities and found it to be certainly interesting enough. I don't, I personally wouldn't say there's something that just like was earth-shatteringly new, but I thought it had some value and pointed out some interesting things that we can consider as a library. Julie has suggested that having the staff read it as well and, um, potentially have a, a discussion in October, so long time to read a very short book, uh, but looking, put it on the October agenda to have some discussion around it.
Probably puts a lot of thoughts all together.
Exactly.
They're not necessarily brand-new thoughts, but they're all together.
Exactly. Yep, yep.
Thank you. So I'll work with our DEI staff committee to move that forward, and I did receive the copies of the book already, so we'll get that moving.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Thanks.
Okay. If not, we'll move into Matters for Library Board Action. Uh, the first item on Board Action is to approve the 2026 Library Board Monthly Meetings Calendar, which happens to be on page twenty-five. Once again, we're meeting on the second Thursday of each month. With the exception of this year, in April, that would be the third Thursday, and in March would be the fourth Thursday.
When is Easter?
Uh, Easter is the fifth, April fifth, that week. Starts that Sunday.
And then also is listed really the, the two budget study sessions that we have.
Yes, I already picked them, so I wanted you to see in advance. I know some of you plan to go away in the winter. So I thought I'd give you lots of notice.
Do you need a motion?
I'll entertain a motion if it's on you.
I'll move to approve the Library Board Monthly Meeting Calendar.
I'll second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll, um, call the vote.
Trustee Helvengus says yes. Trustee Stirring?
Yes.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Oops, sorry. Trustee Bartlett?
Yes.
And Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five-zero.
Next item for board approval is item number two. Approve the request for a closure of the library at 2:00 PM on Friday, December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five, for staff appreciation and cooperation in the city of NOBI. Information in regards to that on page forty-seven and one oh eight. They're moving it to an afternoon instead of an evening?
For staff only. They're going to do something different with boards and commissions.
There's two separate.
Yeah, there's gonna be two.
Gonna be two separate.
Yeah, which I don't have any information yet on the boards and commissions.
Yes.
That be the same night?
Nope.
No.
It's, I just.
Oh, cause I didn't, I didn't get anything sent.
Well, glad you clarified that.
I think it's December fourth, I think. Don't hold me to it, though.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's been put on my calendar yet, and it's usually.
No, that's a Thursday, so I don't know.
Well, it could. It could be a Thursday. Let me see. I, no, I don't have anything yet that's come through, but we will, you'll receive invitations and you will, you will know of something. Um, yeah, the, the premise behind that in, in terms of speaking with the city was that we could all do more together, you know, and kind of build camaraderie as staff and across the parking lot. I know it'll give my staff more opportunity to go by doing this. And so I was, I was hoping that we could, we could do that. They're gonna close, you know, they are only open till five. I would have the staff come in a little early. If they were working a full day, it'd be eight-thirty to five, and, you know, that way we'd close at two o'clock and everyone would go over to the event and be able to participate with staff, with, uh, city staff members. Okay.
Do you need a motion?
Need a motion?
Yep.
A motion to approve support?
Um, been moved, been seconded to close the library at 2:00 PM on Friday, November, December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five, for staff appreciation. A discussion. If not, call the vote, please.
Okay. Trustee Stirring?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett?
Yes.
Trustee Burke?
Yes.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Trustee Helvengus says yes. Motion carries five-zero.
Thank you.
Third item for approval is the two thousand twenty-six Library Closing Calendar, which is on page eighty-seven.
The dates that are highlighted would be my recommendations of new dates, just based on how things fall on the calendar for the twenty-sixth year.
This is basically lumping a few days together.
Moving them around and stuff, yes, from, from your care.
Or something like that.
Yep. So we, the Labor Day, or sorry, not the Labor Day, but the Fourth of July holiday, you know, if we closed this year, it falls on a Friday, this, or it falls on Saturday, so I was looking for the third and the fifth just to, for that weekend, um, for the staff. I know that they would appreciate if we didn't have to come in. It would be great. Um, looking for Saturday, December twenty-sixth, after the holiday that weekend. Um, we've done that in the past. If it's, just gives the staff an opportunity, you know, to spend time with family. And then the Wednesday, the thirtieth, closing at five o'clock before the New Year holiday. So those are the changes for this year.
Well, I have several thoughts, but I'll wait for a motion.
I'll move to, I'll, I'll make the motion to approve the calendar.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. There's been a motion to approve the Library Closing Calendar for two thousand twenty-six. Uh, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes. Um, I, it did have a question from somebody about why we were closed the entire Fourth of July holiday. So I don't know that it, I, I understand the third, because normal businesses will give you one day if a holiday falls on a weekend. I don't know that we should be closed on July fifth. I don't see any reason to be closed December twenty-sixth or twenty-seventh. I looked back at the stats for two thousand twenty-four, and the library was well-attended. Five-seventy-seven on the twenty-sixth, six hundred and four on the twenty-seventh. Twenty-eighth was five hundred and forty-six. I, I just think that's a lot, putting a lot of people out. I think there's, we have such a diverse community that people don't really, I, I think that we should be open for people that, that's a, it's a holiday weekend. And my point with the diverse, diverse community is, when people go away to see their family, I, I think a lot of our people would have to go away for three weeks, and they normally do that during the summer. Do you follow what I'm saying? I, I don't, I can't support this.
Okay.
Does, does this align with the city closures?
Um, I can check and bring them back. Um, my guess is probably that July fourth weekend, uh, the city's gonna close on the third. Um, and they're, they're already closed. See, they're, they're closed on the weekend.
They're closed on the weekend.
Yes. Right, so they're gonna end up getting the holiday for the third.
I don't have a problem with the third. I have, I, I don't, I can't support July fifth, December twenty-sixth, December twenty-seventh, and December thirtieth. And also, Wednesday, November twenty-sixth should be the twenty-fifth.
Wednesday, November?
Oh, right, cause you've got Thursday, the twenty-sixth.
Oh, I apologize. Yes.
No, no, no worries.
Okay, so that should be the twenty-seventh, or is it the twenty-fifth? Let me double check.
No, the twenty-sixth is on Thanksgiving.
Okay.
And, you know, you're clo, that's four days right there. I don't.
So that's, actually, for two thousand twenty-six, that should be the twenty-fifth is Wednesday and the twenty-sixth is that Thursday. So it's the twenty-fifth.
December twenty-fifth?
November. It's November twenty-fifth for that Wednesday, and then November twenty-sixth. Yeah.
Do we always close all of Thanksgiving weekend?
That was a precedence that started a couple of years ago with a board member in terms of, um, you know, having some days to be recognized with the staff for, yeah.
Wasn't that kind of in line with that, that time, um, we were short on staff and it was trying to give some, you know, the overworked staff some breaks?
It was, and then that went with the summer that we closed on Sundays.
Okay.
Yes.
So, so to some degree, they were relatively fully staffed. Some of that logic has changed a little bit.
The logic of spending time with family hasn't, but yes. And it's kind of hard when you do that and then change it back. And we had that conversation, you know, when, when you were considering it is, it's harder than pull back when you've given an opportunity for the staff to spend some time with family.
Well, they do get holidays. They get vacation. I think it's very generous that they get four days off for Thanksgiving. I, I, again, can't support the Christmas weekend. I kind of don't support Thanksgiving, but.
Well, they only get paid for one day for Thanksgiving.
Correct, yes.
They only get paid for one day.
These are, yeah, when it's just, just with the H, that's a paid holiday. The staff doesn't get paid for the closures.
And even on the Fourth of July weekend, the third, they don't get paid for that, and they don't get paid for Sunday, the fifth. I have no problem with the calendar. I think it's, I think it's fair. I think the staff really enjoy for once having a three-day timeframe for family. And we always give people well in advance, plenty of notice about when the library is going to be closed. And it just means that when we do open, there's gonna be more people come in, because they probably missed a few days. But, you know, I think just for these couple of days, I have no problem with this.
And Julie, I mean, you said before that quite a few libraries are closed on Sundays, like every Sunday, all year round?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we take a brunt, especially in the summer, being open. A lot of your local libraries are not open on Sunday in the summer.
Well, the, the, the part that I think about is when they're closed, like three or four days, that's where automated book return doesn't.
We close it as well.
We close it as well.
We, we let everyone know. They don't have anything due. Uh, we, we work the dates. When we know this, this actually gets put into then the software so that nothing's actually due on a day that we're closed. And we close those drops. If it's more than a day, we will close those drops, and we will make sure that the patrons know that the drops are not open and not to return anything. And with being fine-free, we don't run into that problem anymore either, with the fact that someone would be running into an issue.
Well, it looks to me, like, in that December period, we're only open two days, between the twenty-third of December and the thirtieth. Twenty-eighth and the twenty-ninth are the only days it's open in about a whole week. We're open the twenty-eighth and the twenty-ninth, otherwise.
And we're open the thirtieth till five o'clock. I, it's, the thirtieth is till five, is my recommendation.
Oh, oh, that's, that's really not closed that day.
Right. Right, it's closing at five.
Cause if it's two and a half days, then we're open out of a whole week.
Right.
That seems, that seems a little lengthy to me. I could go, I could go either way on the fourth and the fifth of those days, but it, it seems like, uh, with school being off, I, I would think those are sometimes busy days.
Um, not really. There's a lot of travel with our, with our community. And in fact, that's why I don't have us closing any further, you know, on the weekend after January first. And in fact, that's why I don't have us closing any further, you know, on the weekend after January first, we are open, because I know that the kids will probably be going back to school that Monday and will need us. So I don't put in for that weekend of January second and third.
Well, I did look at the stats that you give us every month for December of twenty-four. And December twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, and twenty-ninth, we were quite busy. That's a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So I think, I think we're quite busy, and I didn't realize what you said, Mark, that, you know, we're open two days out of ten.
That, that seems like a lot of closings to me. For that period in particular.
I'm torn.
Well, honestly, is this something that has to be decided today?
We, we can go to August. Uh, August, we'd have to have a decision so that I can meet the calendar and make sure that our closures are in the calendar. So if you'd like another month to look at this, absolutely.
Well, but if, it, I mean, I trust Laurie, she says of these day, we were open these days last year, so this isn't a continuation of last year, it's, there's additional days.
She's asking for additional days, Julie's asking for additional days.
Yeah, okay, but, but I mean, it's not the trend that we started a couple of years ago to put a few days together, we already have done that.
We have, yes.
So these are, these are even more additional days.
They are, and looking at the calendar and the way things fell for twenty twenty-six.
With weekends and things?
Yes.
Is that what you mean?
Yep. But I, if you'd like, I can find out from the city, um, you know, like I said, the weekends, they're closed. So they already, their staff already, you know, benefits from weekends. They don't have to worry about coming in.
This, this, yeah, these are weekend days we're talking about, I don't know that it has anything to do with the city.
Well, the city's already closed, so it wouldn't matter.
Right, that's what, that's my point.
Yeah, so they're already closed and their employees are, are off. Parks and Rec.
Well, we're a seven-day operation.
Yes.
We're, we're, I mean, it's like a hospital, it's a seven-day operation.
Yep. But are we providing hospital needs?
Well.
You know, I'm looking at the numbers from twenty-four, and there's a lot of people that came through our doors during those four days.
Yeah, half of, half of the usage, usually they're about a thousand, but half of was there.
I don't know, not, not what I was looking at.
Well, Friday, you're only open till six, so you don't have till nine o'clock.
Yeah, my, my other, my other, my other item would be the Wednesday, December thirtieth, day before New Year, well, that's a day before New Year's Eve. Now, New Year's Eve, yeah, New Year's Eve is typically a, as an event goes compared to the other, I mean, I understand Thanksgiving, you got the big dinner and so forth and so on. I understand Christmas, uh, you gotta get the Christmas Eve shows and so forth and so on. But the day before New Year's Eve, New Year's Eve events typically are in the evenings. And, you know, to take the, the evening off the before to prepare for the next evening.
Yeah. I, I just put in, you know, I, I ran this by my management team to get their input, and actually, that was, um, a question that they had asked, would, would that be of consideration? I said, I'll put it in for the board.
I mean, if, if, if we're opening New Year's Eve, I say, I say no problem, you can close it to it, if we're open New Year's Eve.
Right, but we are closed.
We are open New Year's Eve.
Right, yeah.
Does that say, I'm sorry to interrupt, Brian, does that say New Year's Eve event, or New Year's?
Oh, I'm sorry, it should be New Year's Eve.
Oh, okay, okay. I was wondering if there was a reason to close cuz there was something happening, I see.
So I, I, if, if that's a concern, I would be totally fine with Wednesday, the thirtieth, being open till nine o'clock and staying open, you know, normal hours on that Wednesday. I would like consideration for Saturday and Sunday, December twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, though, for the staff. That's just my thoughts.
Okay.
It sounds like we need some more time and maybe.
I can't support that.
Allow for our other members who aren't here to weigh in as well.
We can do that, I'll bring it back for August.
Well, well, we can do that, or we can, you can make a, make an amendment, make an amendment.
An amendment.
I mean, you can propose an amendment. That mean that, that we would delete these days from the list, if that's what you want to do.
Okay, I will propose an amendment that we go with the library closings two thousand twenty-six, keep July fifth. Uh, we eliminate Saturday, the twenty, December twenty-sixth, eliminate Sunday, December twenty-seventh, and stay open till nine P M. on the thirtieth of December.
So I want to make sure that I've understood you're, you're keeping July third.
As a day off.
Yes, July third is fine.
And July fifth you're keeping as a day off?
Sure.
Okay, but you are eliminating Saturday, December twenty-sixth, Sunday, December twenty-seventh, and will stay open till nine o'clock on Wednesday, the thirtieth.
Correct.
Okay.
Does everybody understand that amendment?
That's.
Who made the motion?
You made.
You made the motion, yes.
Oh, yeah, you were, would, do you consider that a friendly amendment?
Okay.
I, I mean, you.
Yes, yes.
Oh, you consider, okay, you consider, yeah, you don't have to, I was just saying, okay. So, so the motion now would be the list that we have on page eighty-seven, with the exception that Saturday, December twenty-sixth, Sunday, December twenty-seven would not be on there. And, well, Wednesday, December thirty would not be on there either, because it'd be the break of hours.
Correct.
Okay, that's the, that's the motion.
And also, let's make a note of Wednesday, November twenty-fifth is the date for that Wednesday before Thanksgiving. And that way I can make that change.
That would be a correction.
Oh, right.
Okay, and that's November twenty, okay.
Great.
Any further discussion?
Well, I'm not gonna support it, just so that you know. I just, I feel like this makes sense to me for staff. I think they look forward to the Christmas holiday, and, and I know that you said there were people that came last year, but if we're open, there's always gonna be people that come, so. I just feel like people get enough advanced notice that we're gonna be, um, that we're gonna be closed, and it's fine, the community accepts it. And I know that we're a diverse community, but.
But do, how do you know they accept it?
Well.
I haven't had any comments, I have not received anything, just so you know.
Well, I, like I said, I received a comment about the Fourth of July weekend.
Okay.
I, I think people rely on the library, and, you know, I, I think it's a service that we provide, and we should continue to provide it, but I've already said, you guys know how I feel, so.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I, um, if I was going to do a list, my list would be slightly different. I'd take out the Sunday, the twenty-seventh, Wednesday, uh, the December thirtieth, as I mench, mentioned. And I'd take out Sunday, July fifth, before I'd take out the twenty-sixth of December. Only because, you know, the day after Fourth of July versus the day after Christmas, I'd put, I'd, I'd put a different value on the, on the, I would, I would value those in exactly the opposite order.
You wanna make an amendment of the amendment?
Well, I did.
That would be changing the amendment, I don't know where, how you go from there.
Well, procedurally, I mean.
Don't we have to vote on something at some point?
No, no, we don't, no, but you say procedurally. You, you could, you could defeat the amendment, propose a different amendment. I mean, you, that, if what you wanted to do, you could do another amendment, if this amendment either passes or fails. If you want to do that.
So you want to.
So if the discussion.
So I would, I would be, I would be of the items in yellow, I'd be removing Su- Sunday, July fifth. So you still have two days for the Fourth of July.
Okay.
I would be removing Sunday, December twenty-seventh, you still have three and a half days for Christmas.
Okay.
And I'd remove Wednesday, uh, December thirtieth for the previous reason, and that's just the closing at five. Those are the three I would leave.
You would leave closing at five?
No.
No, I would not leave closing.
Yep.
So those, those three yellow items, Sunday, July fifth, um, Sunday, December twenty-seventh, and Wednesday, the thirtieth. Those are the three that I would.
Would you consider that a friendly amendment to your amendment?
Oh, my gosh.
Basically.
I can support that.
I would support that, I'm comfortable with that.
But I can support that.
Okay.
But Kathy made the original amendment.
Oh, well, then we have Kathy, well, you both would have to approve it to do it.
The amended amendment?
You consider the amendment?
Okay, I'll consider it, yeah, okay.
Okay, so.
I'm still gonna vote no.
Okay. The revised amended is to delete from this list Sunday, July fifth, and delete Sunday, December twenty-seventh, and delete Wednesday, December thirty from this list, which means though the library will be open on those days.
So the library would be open on Sunday, July fifth.
Yep.
Sunday, December twenty-seventh.
Yes.
And open till nine on the thirtieth.
Yes, we would be closed on the third and the twenty-sixth.
And we would make a correction on the November twenty-fifth.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Okay. I guess I will support the amendment, and the reason I'm gonna support the amendment, I, I think, I under, I understand grouping days off, but I also think that means there are members in the community that for three or four days can't go to the library. And, and, and I personally would like the book return to be working as much as possible, and those are major. I mean, I don't think there's a lot of people that come by and try to return those books on the weekend, but there are a fair number that come by and find it closed. So I, I think this is a sort of a, the amendment is a nice compromise between giving some additional time off for staff to be with their family, and at the same time trying to serve the community that we're trying to serve, so I will support the amendment.
I agree, thank you.
I agree too. I think that's a good compromise.
So I will ask, that's the end of the discussion, just call the vote.
All right. Trustee Bartlet.
Yes.
Trustee Burke.
Yes.
Trustee Crawford.
No.
Trustee Havelanga says yes, and trustee Stirring.
Yes.
Motion passes four zero, or four one, pardon me.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda to approve for action is approving the public policy, the mobile hotspot usage policy, which is on page eighty-eight and eighty-nine.
This is a new policy for us. Uh, we wanted to see procedures and the process of hotspots for a couple of years before, you know, really addressing what might need to be changed or addressed with a patron to make, um, information more firm as to what we will, you know, allow and not as it comes to borrowing mobile hotspots with our community, which are very popular. Um, we, you know, this is an opportunity for us to be providing internet service to our, our users if they're traveling or if they have a power outage, which we just had recently up in the Wild Lake area, and people were coming in and borrowing the hotspots, and this gives them an opportunity to have some internet access. So, uh, this has worked well, you know, this is feedback from the actual staff and those that use it and interact with our patrons when it comes to mobile hotspots. Um, it was reviewed by our policy committee and, you know, was feedback from our actual staff that, from the support services department that work directly with our patrons.
So it must have been by the policy committee, the prior policy committee?
Nope, I didn't bring it to policy committee at all, the board one.
Just the staff policy.
Yeah, just the staff policy committee.
Oh, and why was that, that you didn't bring it to the board policy committee?
Um, just because it's brand-new, uh, it didn't need any, you know, I felt like I could be addressing the full board at this point, instead of having to bring it to, to the committee at all. Um, I felt comfortable enough with the way that the process and the procedures were done in the past have worked. Didn't feel like I needed any additional, like, feedback or anything from it, but to bring it just to full board. And if you need time, usually when I bring a, a new policy, if you want a second reading of it, and for me to bring it back for August, I definitely can do that.
Well, my only point, I'm sorry.
No, no, go, go ahead.
My only point is, I, I appreciate the board committee assignments. Because that doesn't entail everybody having to go into the nitty-gritty. I mean, when, when I know something's been approved by a board. Board committee.
Yes.
I trust their opinion.
Sure.
So I, um, think that all policy changes should go through the policy. Now, this one, as you said, is smaller.
Right.
So I don't have a problem with it, I'm, you know, but I think in the future, they need to go through the whole.
The, the policy committee first, yes, okay.
I can't talk.
For the board.
I, I think it should go to the board committees before it comes to the full board.
Sure.
That's the whole point of the board committees. So.
I just knew that you were at a million finance committee meetings in the last month, so I really honestly didn't wanna burden you.
I just.
But I, I totally understand.
You know, I, I guess I kind of agree with Laurie in the sense that there's nothing earth-shattering in here, but from a policy procedural standpoint, it probably is good to go to the, a committee of the board first.
Okay.
And appreciate what the staff has done, but it probably ought to be a board committee, too.
Especially since not everybody's here.
Like I said, you're more than welcome to hold it off till August. You know, we have procedures in place currently that aren't, you know, aren't detrimental to something like this needing to be put in place right away.
Okay, well, yeah, Mark and I agree that it should go through the board committee first.
Okay.
So, well, and what, I'll, I'll make a motion that we, we send this to the policy committee for, hopefully, to meet before next meeting, so the policy committee can look at it.
You got it.
Come to the board next month.
I second.
Can you call that vote, was there any other discussion? If not, could you, could you call that vote?
Absolutely. Trustee Burke.
Yes.
Trustee Crawford.
Yes.
Trustee Havelanga says yes, trustee Stirring.
Yes.
Trustee Bartlet.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Great, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is approve the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five strategic plan year in review, which was presented to us by Dana Early, right?
Dana.
Dana.
Yes. So this is you approving the language and the layout, um, so that we can go ahead and move forward with sharing. I think it's important for full board, um, approval on this, because that way you see all the information, you are agreeing with how this year looked as a review, and for us to use it with other entities that we need to.
I move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Novi Public Library strategic plan as presented to us, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I ask the secretary to call the vote.
Trustee Havelanga says yes, trustee Stirring.
Yes.
Trustee Bartlet.
Yes.
Trustee Burke.
Yes.
And trustee Crawford.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
That takes care of all the matters for library board action tonight. Just for purposes of being informed, there's communication on page one oh six from the Novi Chamber of Commerce for participating in the Novi Community Fest. There is no closed session tonight. I obtain a motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Can we do it by show of hands?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you so much.
Thank you.